This lovely February day in Michigan. I'd like to call to order the study session for February 7th. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Latchka?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney? Commissioner Palacek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Shotwell?
Here.
A present.
Thank you. We will add the first opportunity for public comment. Please be aware that you may comment, but the Board of Commissioners nor the Administrator will answer any questions at this time. You have five minutes. Please step forward and identify yourself. Phil, if you could wait a moment, I'll let Mark go and then you guys.
No, go ahead. Good morning. My name's Mark Mewich. I want to thank you again for the opportunity to serve on the Solid Waste Committee. Yesterday, the Governor, Governor Snyder, announced that he was proposing a $1 million expenditure for the support of recycling in the state of Michigan. This is to establish an office in Lansing that would have four full-time employees. It needs the approval of the Legislature. And what Michigan Recycling is asking us to do is to contact our representatives from Gallison County and ask them to support the Governor's efforts and the recycling office. So this is a letter from Michigan Recycling. And Mr. Shotwell, if I could give that to you.
Sure.
Our recycling--
Motion to receive? No? Okay.
I'm sorry.
I think our Solid Waste Committee is making deliberate progress.
It seems that sooner or later, our landfill's going to run out of capacity. This might require a siting of a new landfill. This is a problem that's coming around the country. I looked on the Internet last night and found that Columbus, Ohio, has the same problem. They have like four or five years' capacity left. They're looking at a bill of $150 million to build a new landfill facility. Of course, their population is larger than ours, but if you extrapolate it from per capita, Jackson County might expect to pay like $40 or $50 million, or someone would, and that's going to come out of our citizens' pockets. So that's only to encourage us to try to develop a recycling program. Mr. Shotwell said that we are considering hiring a recycling director, and I think that would be an excellent idea. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'd like to introduce Phil Moylan and the Chairman of Jackson Area Transportation Authority. Phil, I think you have an introduction?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. And Board members, pleased to introduce to you today Brad Charkowski, who is the new Executive Director of the Jackson Area Transportation Authority. Brad was born and raised in Kalamazoo and went to Michigan State University, which is one of the main reasons we hired him. And he has been involved in transit operations for, since approximately 2000, when he had 196, when he had his own operations, and then worked with Michigan, in Minnesota, and most recently in Seattle, Washington. One of the things that attracted us to Brad was that he, his job in Washington in particular involved dealing with communities as they were expanding their program out there and having to work collaboratively with the communities and the writing public to take care of things. Anyway, Brad could just say a few things. Appreciate and give you a chance to meet him, and then we'll be working with you as years go on. Thank you.
Well, good morning. Like Phil said, my name's Brad Charkowski, and I'm the new Executive Director. I know I see a few familiar faces, some people I met back when they were going through the interview process, and we had a big meet and greet. So just wanted to say I'm happy to be here. It's kind of new being back to the snow again, but I'll readjust. Like Phil said, my most recent background was working with Sound Transit out in Seattle, and we're in the middle of a $32 billion expansion. Did work originally as Operations Finance and then took over the light rail operation out there. So happy to be back here in Jackson and bring some experience and look forward to working with you all over the months and years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none at this time, I'd like to give the meeting to the County Administrator.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to swap up, mix up the agenda a little bit. Allegiance is not here currently. We expect a little later. In the meantime, we'll go to the number, our second item on the agenda, which is Jim Latham talking about our software purchase, financial software, that is.
Yes, good morning. What we'd like to do this morning is talk a little bit about the process that we went through to select the software. And we're also going to have a representative from BSNA Software, Dan Burns. Will speak a little bit about the capabilities and a little bit about the company that we're going to select. Basically, briefly, the current system that we have is outdated. We're using a 2004 version of it, and we're two versions behind the current release from that company. We also actually, the users have to use two different versions of the software because either one by itself is not complete. So we have to switch. People have to have, it's really like learning two systems, and we have to switch depending upon the functions that we have to perform. The system is also running on an old server, a Unix server, and our IT department tells us that if that server goes out, we could be down a week or more just to replace the server. There's, because it's not consistent with the current developments and so forth, it's not Windows-based. So there's enough reasons, and also the support from the company has been adequate, inadequate. The company's located on the West Coast, and they're still on California time. So by the time we get our answers, it's really the next day, which is not acceptable for us. We went through an RFP process. We received five responses, starting on the right, the J.D. Edwards response besides the price. They were also using the Unix or the outdated architecture to house the software. So they were eliminated for two reasons. Sun Guard Public Sector is our current vendor. We wanted to stay away from them due to our previous discussion. So basically, we had three BSNA Software from Bath, Michigan, just up the road near Lansing. Tyler Technologies headquartered in Maine, but they're also nationwide. Their support is from Texas and other locations. New World Systems is also a Michigan company. We went through an involved evaluation process. There was a selection committee consisting of the County Administrator's Office, Finance, HR, IT, basically the heavy users of the system. We narrowed down the selection to the two top candidates, which was BSNA and Tyler Technologies or Munus. And we invited those two vendors in for demonstrations. Any county employee was invited to attend. We had, on the average, 40 employees attending each one. And BSNA was ranked number one by the employees. These are the line users of the software. The selection committee also performed some due diligence procedures. We contacted BSNA and Tyler users. I contacted Ottawa and Livingston Counties that use Tyler. And we also had a conference call with Muskegon County. Muskegon County has recently implemented BSNA Software and is very happy with the process so far. Nothing is perfect. We discussed some issues that they've encountered, probably unique to their situation, but basically they're very happy with the process. In talking with Ottawa County, they've been, probably it's taken them a couple of years to get Tyler implemented, and according to the Finance Director, it's still not complete. There's one or two major issues that they've encountered that have not been resolved. I also talked with the City of Jackson, which is, has been using BSNA Software, and they're very happy with the software. We also, there was some survey data available. Thank Amanda for furnishing the survey from the Clerks Association. Karen Kaufman furnished some information from the Treasurers Association. And BSNA is highly rated among those two groups. Other factors that we considered, BSNA is a Michigan-based company and has a heavy concentration of Michigan clients. And we feel that that enables them to really focus on the particular needs of Michigan municipalities and governmental entities. While governmental accounting nationwide has a lot of similarities, there's some uniqueness to the state of Michigan that BSNA Software would be familiar with. And BSNA Software also will integrate with modules that we already are using. The Treasurer's Office uses BSNA Software for their property tax module. So the Treasurer is very excited about getting this implemented. So our conclusion is, we recommend BSNA Software. So I'd like to turn over discussion to Dan here, who can go over some of the capabilities of BSNA.
Thanks, Jim. Again, I want to thank the county and, on behalf of Jim, inviting me in to tell you a little bit about BSNA. It was a very extensive process. Everybody was very professional. We dealt with here at the county. I want to thank everybody and the staff that was part of the process. Lots of questions, very thorough investigation, and things were vetted out very well. The current partnership that Jim spoke about, these are the, in name only, these are the applications. So we have BSNA's assessing application, our tax, delinquent tax programs, special assessments, the pre, and even dog licensing for the county, our applications that are currently residing within the county. Internet services is a way for citizens and others to view into property tax matters and assessing matters and even animal licensing matters via the web. What we proposed to the county in our RFP response was a fully integrated ERP solution. And what this will bring together, when we're talking ERP, it's really the back office in terms of financials, core financials, whether it be general ledger, accounts payable, procurement, payroll, everything that runs the county administrative organization. And surrounding that are a lot of the applications that the county already had. So what we're doing is we're bringing in full integration. We'll take it in, any receipt coming into the county will be fully integrated into one cash-receiving engine, which is why I believe the Treasurer is very happy that we're going to be coming aboard. Why BSNA, and I think a big reason why we scored very high, it kind of gets back to, we were founded in the late 80s. We had our founder, the BSNA, I like to tell you, is our founders. It's Jim Belliffel, Tom Schur, and I'm one of the VAs, we're the associates. So it's Belliffel, Schur, and Associates out of, just outside of Lansing. We were founded based on a lot of homestead changes that were taking place. So Jim Belliffel was a programmer. He built some automation that would really help assessors in the state of Michigan, which integrated with tax. And then there were some changes going on. Some of the vendors you looked at, Tyler being one of the finalists, they've grown through acquisition. So they go to different markets and they acquire. And a big change event that happened in the state of Michigan was Tyler bought a company called Fund Balance, which was out of Ann Arbor. And when that happened, a lot of Fund Balance customers came to Jim and Tom, our founders, and said, "Guys, you got to write financials." And we always listen to our customers, so that's what we did. And we built the financials. So we're running up on about 15 years where we've had a fully integrated ERP system and virtually 100% retainage of customers. We haven't really lost any customers to any of our competitors. How we do that is really listening to the customers, to living, I think, the latest technology with very easy-to-use offerings and always evolving and changing. Tom, Tom tells me, our President and CEO, that really what separates us, and I believe this to be the case, is our support. What we do is we commit to responding to our customers within 15 minutes. There's many ways for them to communicate with us. They can do it via the phone. They can do it through the applications. They can email us. But what we do is we measure, when that call comes in, how long they're going to be on that call and the duration of the call, and our response time is always measured within 15 minutes. This time of year, quite honestly, is the only time we maybe fail on that because with W-2 season, it can get a little bit of taxing, so we might go to 20 minutes, but never, never more than that. And some of the benefits, Jim spoke to this, but I think in terms of having the property suite, we are at a extreme advantage here in the state of Michigan because we're the only vendor that can bring a fully integrated ERP solution all the way through to taxes, all the way through financials, payroll, everything with common cash-receiving. When you go into new technology, we're on the .NET platform, really what we're trying to do is provide you with insulation from obsolescence. You're not investing in technology you're going to have to change in five years. This is something that should last for quite some time. It's a .NET standard. It's a very performance-oriented system, very, very fast. I know they've invested, they're going to be investing in the hardware necessary to run the system efficiently. Ease of use is something we pride ourselves on. And then for you guys, in terms of getting information from the folks that are going to be using the system, should be very easy to provide you with the reporting you need. But probably the biggest thing a lot of municipals are looking to get to is more of a paperless environment, and that's what we're able to provide. So there's a lot of workflows built into the software, especially within procurement, where requisitions no longer need signatures. You have electronic signatures, means of moving information through, as well as web-type access where we can even take it to a smartphone to approve a requisition if that's necessary. The customers, being a Michigan-based customer, I mean, a vendor, we have over 1,200 customers in the state of Michigan, over 500 of those being on our financial suite. You know, one thing I'm always very comfortable telling our customers is, you can go to our website. We're the only vendor that publishes our entire customer list as available on our website. You only do that if you're very confident that they're going to say good things about you, and that's helped us. But I didn't want to show the whole list, but what I did is I highlighted a few of the customers that we've converted over the years that were similar in size and scope to the county. Madison Heights was on a Sun Guard application. That's the existing platform you're on now. West Bloomfield Township, the City of Birmingham, Westland, Saginaw, and then Jackson was one of the other vendors you were looking at. Been a longtime customer of ours as well. But your county, and I want to recognize that, so in terms of our county client base, what I did is I just looked a couple of years back. We have over 20 counties that are using our software, but most recent conversions was Mackinac County in the UP, St. Joseph County nearby, Delta County, another one in the UP, Isco. Muskegon is our largest county on our financial suite, implemented in 2012. One of their big decisions was, they were looking, I think they came down to the final two as well, between BSNA and Tyler, and they again made the decision because Tyler was committing a couple of year implementation, that they went with us and we were able to get them up in the timing that they were looking forward to. The implementation, we take very seriously. We don't ask for any money upfront. So in terms of our, you know, how do we win on this, when we get paid, it's really when you go live is when you're paying BSNA. So we assign a project manager. There's going to be a full implementation team, onsite training in multiple areas. We'll have multiple trainers onsite. Data conversion, we've already started talking about data conversion. West Bloomfield was on the same system, their IT team. It's a rather legacy system, so they're going to be of great help. That's one great thing in the state of Michigan is all the municipals tend to help one another, and we're going to lean on that a little bit. We know we're going to have to build some integration and some interfaces with other offerings, and we're going to allow for a lot of report development, but again, support. But just kind of keeping it short and sweet, what we're promising is a nine-month implementation from the time the project accepted all the way through to implementation, conversion, training. So we're looking at probably about a fall-type implementation of 2014 where they'd be fully live on the system. And lastly, again, we don't want to lose touch of support. These are the different ways they can convert, I mean, contact us, again, through the application, via the phone, and tech support, because once we're up and running, that's when we really earn our monies in terms of responding to their needs, and we kind of pride ourselves on that. That's kind of what I had for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from Commissioners?
A comment, and thank you for the presentation, very thorough. And certainly Director Latham, at least I can say, I would say that we certainly respect your comments on this and your view. It is a little concerning. You've got Sun Guard, which is less, over $100,000 less, and you also have Tyler, roughly $20,000. And based on the information we received here, obviously, it's very thorough, very clear. I suspect if Tyler or Sun Guard were here, I suspect they would put a very good spin on what they do as well. Obviously, they're not here. That being said, I do have a question about the year maintenance that's included in this. Past the year, do we have any idea what typically maintenance costs would be? I know they could vary, but is there any kind of data on that?
Yes. What we committed is three years tied to CPI in the state of Michigan. That's been very flat, or if not negative, in the last several years. So we don't charge support in year one. It begins in year two, and they have a three-year commitment on, in terms of what that's going to look like, in terms of the annual expense.
Right. Thank you.
I believe that in the materials that are going to Personal Finance on Monday, there's a schedule of support, and I think it varies from 30-some thousand a year up to 40, 41, 42,000 on the last year of that schedule. Yes?
The system we have now, is there an annual cost for support?
Yes, there is. I believe that's over $50,000. I forget the exact number. Also, when you, as one of the comments in the, in our proposal is, in our staff report, is that there is savings with respect to the support cost, but there's also additional cost involved with using a legacy system that's frustrating to get information out of. In other words, it's hard to identify the additional cost that we incur already staying with our old system. Just the frustration that we go through to get the proper reports printed, to get the information out, the frustration we go through in the budgeting process just to get accurate data and so forth. So that's hard to quantify. So in terms of savings, I believe by implementing a new system, we would save in terms of overall costs. We'd have more efficiencies and so forth. We'd have more information, better information.
Okay. So our annual upkeep after three years, well, it's not a new cost we're going to incur.
Right.
Where are we paying that?
Yeah. Basically, additional cost is 380-some thousand for the purchase of the software and the licensing, initial licensing. There's, I mean, there's additional unidentified costs at this point because there's extra time involved with this, and the implementation process is not pleasant. We just, we can't simply throw a switch here. You know, it's going to take some time, going to take some planning to get this done.
Thank you.
Jim, isn't it accurate that the majority of the townships in the county use BSNA in one module or another?
Yes, that's correct.
Which I think is a huge plus for us as well.
I don't know anything about Tyler, but when I was auditing with Treasury, Fund Balance was one of the systems that was out there, and it was bad for the local units that used it. If Tyler bought it, I don't know how they changed it, but...
Yeah. One of the concerns about Tyler, frankly, is while it has good capabilities, their implementation process could extend over 18 months. While it takes time, I cannot appreciate it taking that long to implement a system. And then the experience at Ottawa County hasn't been the best, that there are some basic issues that are still not resolved, probably after a two-year period. Livingston County, on the other hand, they seem fairly happy with Tyler. But again, the vast majority, and again, the vast majority, based on a survey by the Treasurer's Office and the Clerk's Office, really recommends BSNA. Yes?
Just out of curiosity's sake, and you don't have to explain a long, drawn-out explanation, but Sun Guard is $100,000 less expensive. Why were they not chosen? Is it reputation?
Well, again, that's our current system. And our current system, the frustrations we have with support, for example, and I believe that Sun Guard was still, they're not going to use, and I don't understand all the technical aspects of it, they would not be using SQL database. SQL database, in other words, the data for BSNA and the data for Tyler Technologies would be housed in a table system, and it's really Windows-based and has different data capabilities, whereas Sun Guard, again, is using an old architecture and so forth. So given our frustrate, we kind of just disregarded them because of our frustration with them currently.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns, or otherwise? If not, this will be at committee and then to the full board later this month. Thank you. I have not seen allegiance here yet, so why don't we move to Mr. Brown's presentation on the Cascades? You good for that, Adam?
Just a brief lead-off to that from the committee. I think we had a total of four meetings. We had a great group of people there. There were seven of us appointed to the committee with Adam helping, and it was really an exciting and easy task, I think. But I appreciate Adam's hard work on it. I'm glad you assigned him to that because he's very thorough, was able to capture very well the thoughts of the committee and get them documented and then put together in this report, and I appreciate that.
I too would thank Adam. I've seen some of the late evenings, long hours and pain and suffering he's gone through, so there's quite a bit of effort gone into this process thus far. Thank you.
Thanks. We do have a number of the committee members here today that we appreciate them coming to this presentation and support of that committee's work. Immediately, we agreed on the mission of that committee, and it was to investigate and recommend financing options to the Jackson County Board of Commissioners to fund the Cascades fall renovation. So I thought I'd start a little bit of a little picture journey with Cascades, and we had the opportunity to have some great conversations with community members, foundations, and Sparks family, and I learned a lot. Dave and I sat down with Sperry Sparks, his grandson of Cap Sparks, and had just a fascinating conversation, and he left us with a document he's working on that talks about his family's history here. And I think we can scan that and send it to you if we haven't already, but I'm sure you'd enjoy reading that as we did. Cascades in Jackson opened in 1932, and that was built after Cap Sparks went on this world tour with the Zouavs, a performance group. And he had been through Barcelona, Spain, to a place called Mont Juie, a castle which you can see behind those falls, but those are known as the magical falls of Mont Juie. And that fall, as you can see the similarities between it and ours, was built in 1929 for the International Exposition. It was built in very quickly, in just a year. Yeah, I think, find it amazing that he was able to see that and then come over to Back to America in Jackson and make that happen, and just three years later. Cascades opened in 1932, and I thought this was awesome, his vision for the Cascades. He said he wanted an attractive attraction that would provide visitors with a positive impression of the city. So I'm going to remind you of that in a little bit further down the presentation. But it opened to a crowd of 25,000 people, and that seems like an awfully big crowd for, at the time, when cars were still pretty new to most folks, on its 59th birthday. Within a few years, the Cascades were known around the world, and today we get visitors from all over the country and all over the world. All this information came directly from Wikipedia, and on your attachments, you can link that, click that link to Wikipedia, and I'll tell you all the other-- click that link to Wikipedia, and I'll tell you all the other fascinating tidbits about the Cascades. And, let's see. Didn't mean to take you there right now. So, the Board of Commissioners gave a hundred thousand dollars to the Parks Association to initiate a study on the Cascades, a preliminary engineering, if you will, for what needs to be done there to keep it operational, what are the possibilities, what the vision is for that. And we all saw that presentation, I think about a year and a half ago, and after some thinking about it, the Parks Commission recommended to the Board of this Board that they establish an Ad-Hoc Committee, which you did in October of this past year. And what they came out with and said was, really, these three components, all the electrical elements, nearly all the mechanical elements need to be replaced, about twenty percent of the concrete on that structure. Demolition of the amphitheater with the replacement plaza was the best desired plan for that. And all these improvements together would cost about nine and a half million dollars. We've, in conversations, been rounding that up to ten, but when we get down to the exact numbers, it's nine and a half million dollars. These are the Ad-Hoc Committee members. Like I said, some of them are here today. That was requested on September of two thousand thirteen, and they met their first meeting on October. Just to go over what the committee did, they met four times. In between those meetings, they met with community foundations, they met with legislators. We met with the state of Michigan, and we met with the Sparks family. And outside of those meetings wrapped up our work. We shared this document. The last time we met, we reviewed the contents of the document. We shared the document electronically with members of the committee, and they responded with their edits, and we're here today to go over those. So, I thought, I wanted to also share with a picture journey of what is the Cascades? What does it mean to this community? Pictures do seem to share that story very well. So, you can see a bunch of different things that happened over there that really define what that means to this community, whether it's up in this corner, an event where they're watching a performance, whether it's kids down here playing or rolling down the hill on their side, the actual light show that happens several times a week during the summer, the fireworks on the Fourth of July or Memorial Day, sledding, which I just experienced again last week. And we had one gentleman that showed up at the committee meetings, a postman in Jackson, and he is also a hobby photographer, and he declared it one of the most romantic places in Jackson. So, there's been, according to him, a number of proposals, and also, we know weddings there. And you see down here, some of the folks enjoying the fireworks, probably on Memorial Day or Fourth of July. So, what is the Cascades? It's really the centerpiece of an amazing park in Jackson. There's summer entertainment, and it's not just the facility that we provide entertainment around or a nice waterfall show, but this is the center of a park that has winding trails, playgrounds, baseball diamonds, lagoons, and golf. It's nostalgic for a lot of generations, across from father to son to daughter. It's an economic draw, brings people into our community and who use our businesses, and some might say it's a symbol of our community. I know when I was moved here almost six years ago, and I Googled Jackson, when you look at images, one of the images you get repeatedly is the Cascades. And I would ask you to think about what is the symbol of our community right now? As I go to work with my peers around the state in conferences, what I hear is about a jail and about a jail community, and for those of us who live there, we know that's a very insignificant part of our community as far as impacting our daily lives, but what is it that we want this community to be known by? What is the image that we want for our community? And this is where I would go back to Cap's work stream of, he wanted to build an attraction that would provide visitors with a positive impression of Jackson. So, amazingly enough, I was walking in the Cascades Manor House, and I went by this photograph on the top-left corner, which is very soon after it was built. And I hadn't seen that picture yet, but I had seen the report by the Spicer Group, which opens back up that plaza, and it makes it much larger than it currently is. But what we're doing is going back to the way it was originally designed. So, this is an open park concept, and talk a little bit later about what the value is to that. To be successful in this endeavor, we've really got to open that park up. Right now, it's only open during the evenings, during the certain nights, and the report done by the Spicer Group shows it as an open park, where perhaps your runners that are there all day, that start early in the morning and go to the evening, might run right through it. There's splash pads built into it because when kids go to a park with a water feature, they want to get wet, and what they do now is they stand in the midst of the fountains up the staircases there. So, this provides them an opportunity right at the base to get wet, like they want to do. So, funding sources, these are all outlined in the white paper that the committee produced, and starting off was a penny drive. This is not a great moneymaker, but what it does is spread the information about the Cascades. So, kids, they give these envelopes or boxes to kids to take home and get the pocket change from parents, which I've done a number of times for my kids. And what happens is the information is conveyed to parents. So, every kid, hopefully, you've got one or two parents at home that look through that information and read it and dump in their pocket change. It does produce a little bit of money, but the greater benefit is the information and the support it gives for the drive. Another idea is the idea of public donations at specific events. So, as the falls are doing their family night on Wednesdays or their Friday or Saturday show, somebody gets up and asks, tells a story about what we're trying to do with the Cascades, the renovation, and asks for donations on their way out. Or as they're at the band shell, the same could be done. One idea from Commissioner Plachek that he shared with me was that golf course, we could ask for a donation of a dollar per round, and then you have people that are interested at that point, maybe a follow-up, that they would have additional donations. Individual donations, we differed a little bit at this recommendation. From what I was just talking about, this is really about going after folks with roots or have been successful, are still in our community. They may be in our community, they may be out of our community, but they have resources, and going directly after them. I didn't want to name specifically by name, but I'm sure as I'm talking about this, all those folks go into your mind, at least some of them, and so, we would go after those individuals. There are other governmental resources. One of the things the Ad-Hoc Committee struggled with and discussed over multiple meetings was, do we go after the designation of the National Historic Registry? Getting on the National Historic Registry does not cost you anything, however, you may need that to get federal funds, which will cost you in terms of paying prevailing wage, maybe extra requirements in your design. So, what the committee came down to was, I think they saw value in applying for the National Historic Registry, but not necessarily after going after federal funds that would perhaps increase the cost. So, very deliberately, think about going after federal funds before making that commitment. But going after the designation is of value because what we found, too, was that there's foundations outside of Jackson who want to see that historic designation before they'll invest money in your project. So, it did have some benefits. And also, state funding, there are some resources for state. I mentioned the Michigan Arts Council in the white paper. We met with them, and part of our phases would be eligible for their capital funding. They also told us when we were talking to them, we should be applying to them for our programmatic funding, but the initial phase of demolishing the wall, they said, we wouldn't be interested in that, but anything related to the electrical or the producing the show, that is right up our alley. So, there's some funding available there from the state. We heard that we ought to engage the businesses in the funding of this project, and we have a lot of large businesses, institutions in our community, and again, we didn't want to name them in the white paper, but I tried to put pictures of their industry up here to provoke thought. On the other side is the foundations, and we have a very giving community in Jackson, and we met with a lot of those, certainly not an exhaustive list of foundations, but we met with many of them, and the value of meeting them was not just to prime the pump, but to get their ideas about how to conduct a fundraiser. So, many of these ideas that you're seeing here this morning came from our meetings with those individuals and groups. So, we get asked repeatedly, what is the county going to have into this? And our response to that was, well, there's year-end savings. We have appropriated year-end savings in the past towards capital initiatives, particularly things on a high priority, that's a possibility. In terms of a millage, the committee says that would be a last resort recommendation and only to fill a smaller gap. Would it be a dedicated millage or a Parks and Recreation Millage is something that the Board would need to decide. The committee didn't specify what that should look like, but you have a couple of options. But then, there's additional option of, maybe we don't need a millage. If there's just a small gap, perhaps we can do debt service, we can afford some level of debt service. What level that is, we'd have to conduct some analysis with our finance department, and talking with Mike and I, we'd have to figure that out, what we could afford. And that's all a matter of priorities, and of shifting priorities, how important is this compared to other things that we do or other things that we can't do? One of the things we have to think of as we go forward with the renovation project is how do we recognize the donors? And there's a lot of different ways to recognize donors, but that has to be a key piece in it. The committee discussed whether a dedicated fundraiser was needed, and their position was that, yes, indeed it was. What that looks like, they didn't specify. It could come in a lot of forms. If you've got somebody with experience and is willing to volunteer their time, then that would be wonderful. If you've got a group, an advocacy group with experience, then that also may be a solution, but paying a professional fundraiser or hiring somebody that that is their only focus is also a solution. The main point was that there's got to be some group or some individual whose purpose is to raise these funds. It would be very difficult to accomplish trying to assign that to existing staff with the county that makes that their goal. Just throwing a couple of pictures of the renewed Cascades, what the vision is for it, to remind you, I've got the picture of Reagan here, tear down that wall, Mr. Gorbachev. And, well, we heard a lot of people that came and speak during public comment, and as we met with other individuals, and what I've heard from the Board of Commissioners, they've heard they don't like that wall around there. It really obstructs the view, and we know the only good view of the falls outside of, inside that amphitheater is from KB Road right down the path. So, tearing down that wall, the reason the Ad-Hoc Committee talked about that is, if we're going to break this down into pieces, does it make sense to do that up front? And the committee recommends that, yes, indeed, it makes sense to do that up front because they believed it would get further buy-in. So, we asked the Spicer Group to go back and break this nine and a half million dollars into phases, because we also heard from the foundations and other individuals we met with that it's too big of a project, nine and a half million dollars is too big. Break it up, and you find the funders for each phase as you're going through it. So, what they came back with us is this six-phased approach towards constructing the renovations. Phase one would be tearing down that wall, and that's about a half million dollars. There's a budget sheet in the back of the white paper, I think it's, they were more, closer around four hundred and fifty thousand, but again, we're trying to talk in round numbers because this is just preliminary engineering. And the second phase is the more essential parts of the renovation. That's the mechanical, the electrical components. They divide the electrical components into two different pieces. One is the essential things, the things that needs to run each day, that's the pumps, the electricity, all of which is outdated and much of it is original. The second phase of the electrical and mechanical is the stuff on the surface, but before that, they'd say, let's do the concrete work, which estimated about twenty percent of the concrete has to be replaced. And then, phase two of the electrical and mechanical, the plaza, and then finally, the The one thing I would add, my thoughts have escaped me, so... Excellent work by the Ad-Hoc Committee, and we had some real passionate people there, and it was great process. I think it was a wisely-used process because it got us out talking with members of the community and the foundations, the legislators. We've had some great work done by our legislators in Lansing and some great interest. We conducted a tour at the Cascades and a number of tours. So, with that, we'll take any questions, and maybe you'll jar my memory on that one item.
Thank you. Adam, you made reference to this proposed renovation as being an open park concept. Would you please address how the, currently, we have a revenue source for paid emissions coming in to see the Cascades. Would you please address how these changes would affect that revenue stream compared to how it is now? Thank you.
Thanks. That's one of the pieces of that open park concept is scalable equipment. So, I can see the reasoning in why they built this amphitheater, and it was to create a market where you can charge admission and have a revenue stream for it. So, immediately, I remember thinking, as I looked at that report, is how do we keep the money stream? It's not totally self-funding. It provides some revenue, but it is subsidized by the General Park Fund. But the scalable furniture, scalable seating, stuff we could roll in and roll out, that expands the uses of that plaza. This plaza could be used for graduations, for lots of public events, weddings, it already is used for some weddings, but in the evening, when you have a performance, you roll that scalable seating in, recreate your market to sell tickets, and when it's done, roll it back out. So, we have to build in storage where we can keep this equipment. And in fact, one of the things they said, if we take down that wall, we may have to purchase some of that scalable seating up front, so we have seating for our handicap visitors, but that's the idea of the open park concept, and thanks for prompting.
Adam, it's detailed more in the white paper itself, but I think one of the things worthy of mention is something that we heard from our, at least one of our legislators, if not both, was about ongoing funding for maintenance of the park. And as we began talking quietly with some of these local foundations and people, that's one of the things that they talked about also, is hearing from somebody that was trying to raise funds for ongoing maintenance of it, and we kind of came to the conclusion, and it's in the white paper, that we would be wise to dedicate a portion, I think the number we were throwing around was five percent, of the funding that we pulled in, dedicate that to ongoing maintenance. That way, we're not at this point, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now again, and I think that's noteworthy of mention, which would give, I think, a comfort level to the public anyway.
Yeah, that's the piece I was...
I thought it was.
...forgetting. The Sparks family was intending to go out and approach many of the same people we were talking with about creating an endowment fund. Well, an endowment... An endowment fund is you gain a large sum of money and then peel off the interest each year. So what we proposed was, let's go to those meetings together, rather than us both trying to hit the same people. We're just going to tell them, 5% of your contribution will go into an endowment fund, which can be used towards long-term maintenance. The rest of it will be going to fix it now. Because one of the things we heard from our legislators is, what are we going to do to make sure we're not in this position in 30 years down the road? You can see 20% of the concrete has to be replaced now, but it's all still deteriorating. So there's going to be a need to keep replacing pieces of concrete, balustrades, and pieces like that. So if we've got an endowment fund big enough to pull off, and we stay up on top of those, then we can keep up with it. And I equate that much to like the Manor House is operated. They are constantly keeping that facility modernized and up to date. And to not get in a position like we're in now, where you have a nine and a half million dollar need, we've got to create a solution to maintain it going to the future.
Adam, I think another thing worth noting is that when we looked at the construction phasing and scheduling that, that we're looking at not having any downtime during the summer for the cascade, so that it would continue to operate while we were doing the construction.
Yep, that's right. Even the first phase, the engineer said, replace that with sod, and you can have seating on the lawn to watch that, bring your lawn chairs, blankets, stuff like that.
Anyone else have any additional questions, comments? Thank you very much, Adam. And I see that our guests from Allegiance have shown up. Appreciate you guys coming in this morning. I know it's early for everyone. Okay, Adam, great, can stall that. And if Chad Noble and Georgia Fatah would like to come up to the podium, it's a pleasure to have you this morning.
Adam, was that doctors and nurses in that one photo on the cascades?
It may have been, actually. Well, that made it easy.
How are you?
I'm doing good.
Thank you.
Let's see. There you go.
Good morning, you all. Glad to be here. I've talked to several of you, and Steve and I just had a conversation this week and felt like it would be helpful if we came and gave you a little bit of background about our proposed affiliation with the University of Michigan. And we're in a process that you'll see at the end, where having community letters of support, we think, could benefit this. And that's what we would like to ask from the commissioners after you've had a chance to deliberate on it. I know some of you have seen bits and pieces of this presentation, but what I would like to do is just frame what we are proposing and what we think the advantages will be for Allegiance and for the community. And it is really in a time of enormous change in health care, changes that we think need to happen, and changes that Allegiance has been positioning itself to do for a number of years with health care reform, because we think it's critical for our community, for our country, to be able to have affordable health care in communities like this across the country. And we also know that in Jackson, the data is very clear that we have a number of health challenges that are affecting not only the cost of care, but the productivity and the longevity of our citizens. So we are choosing a future, and do I, let me, this, maybe this is operator error. Is this the, this doesn't seem to be working unless I don't have it engaged right. Now, so this button?
Yeah, the left button.
Which, this one?
This one here.
Will it advance it? Okay, all right. On December 2nd, the Allegiance Board and the University of Michigan sign a letter of intent relative to this relationship. And I want to give you just a few details. First of all, this would create an affiliation in which we would actually become part of the University of Michigan, and I have an organization chart that I can show you. I think many people are aware that we've had a number of affiliations and clinical initiatives with the university. Actually, we were their first ever affiliate outside of Ann Arbor when in 1995, we built the Radiation Oncology Center, which is jointly owned by the university and by Allegiance and has been for all of that time, and has brought a very needed service to our community. One of the questions that were consistently asked is the nature of the transaction, the official legal transaction. And both of us are nonprofits, a little bit different structure with the University of Michigan being a state entity and Allegiance being a private nonprofit, but this isn't a sale. In our world of nonprofits, it's legally known as a member substitution in which our parent will change, will have new owners. There isn't going to be a check directly written to Allegiance that is going to go somewhere. Because typically, that's what we think of in a sale, money's paid, the owner changes, and the assets can be moved. And that's not the case here. And again, what we're working to do is position both the university, because they face the same issues we do, just with, you know, a different environment and obviously different resources. And so we both need to be positioned in the new world of health care reform. This is a schematic. This isn't a legal organization chart, but it gives you a frame of reference that of where Allegiance will be, where our community's health system will be placed within the University of Michigan's structure. The legal entity within the university is the university itself, and it has all of the traditional components we think of, a place like the university with their programs ranging from the academics to the athletics. And then they have a health system there that consists of the education components for medical and nursing education, and then they have their three hospitals and their health centers largely around Ann Arbor. They are intending at this point, and this is still being reviewed between the university and Allegiance, creating a new nonprofit corporation that would hold Allegiance Health as a tax-exempt entity. And we anticipate that there could be other hospitals throughout the state that would also join. The university has a small ownership role in the hospital in Midland that just occurred last year. So people have asked what the university is seeing in this relationship with Allegiance. And one of the things they're very aware of because of our long-term relationship is how hard we've worked to improve quality and keep our costs low. We're one of the lower-cost providers in the state, and the university is, because of its nature, a much more high-cost setting. The geographic proximity in our particular case gives us different advantages than hospitals in other regions. We're known for our innovative care models, for our willingness to partnership, and for the clinical programs that we've put in, including those with the university. And they know that we're an important resource for this region. The community leadership and involvement, I can tell you, has been very impressive to the university. Some of you were at our breakfast for business on December 4th. And we've been talking quite a bit with the university about how our community works, but having that showing at 7:30 on a winter morning and seeing over 200 people, I think their thought process is it was going to be a small kind of event. And to have over 200 people highly engaged, asking a lot of good questions, and really interested in health care in the community was an important event for them to experience. And then we know that we have a track record of a number of relationships with the university. From Allegiance's perspective, and our board has spent a lot of time over the last year or so evaluating what we were going to do for our future, recognizing that reform was actually coming a lot faster, unrelated to the Affordable Care Act. It's just the whole issue of the cost of health care and health care access. For us, it's the opportunity to continue to improve our quality and keep our costs low, which we think is critical, so that we can grow and have access to care. We think that there's a tremendous opportunity to expand our clinical offerings, and we have specified those. So the thing that we have done is work to define the essential clinical services that will stay in Jackson for at least 10 years, and then those that we're working to enhance. And we will form a clinical council with physicians from the university and Allegiance to talk about how to build those. We have local influence because the Allegiance Board that you see in the Allegiance structure that I showed on the organization chart is going to have five of 13 trustees appointed by our current parent, Allegiance Health Services. So maybe I could go back to the organization chart. All right, I'm going to need more technical assistance again, Adam, I apologize. I was going to go in reverse if you'll just point to the, this one's reverse? Okay, great. Okay, so the green box that you see is going to have its own board. It'll be a fiduciary board, and we will have our own staff, our own medical staff, our own CEO. So there'll be a local influence that doesn't typically exist. Many of these transactions, the green box would wind up as an advisory board. So we're very pleased that we were able to negotiate that arrangement with the university. The financial stability, three things will happen. First of all, the university is committed to $100 million of new investment in Allegiance as we contemplate the facilities that we need. And we're in the process of evaluating that. We have a hospital that's nearly 40 years old, and where we have invested in new, such as the heart tower and the emergency department. We've really been able to create something very special that makes a difference for the community. But we have the rest of the facility that we have kept up, that is really not meeting the needs of patients for all private rooms, for larger rooms, and for a different design that will add to the quiet and a much more healing experience. And that's what we're seeing in the heart tower where we built, it's a much more optimal environment for patients, our staff, and our physicians. Then we have routine and maintenance capital that will be committed to, that runs about $25 million a year. That's the routine upkeep that we need. And then there will be $25 million placed in the Allegiance Health Foundation on closing. So there's a significant amount of money that is committed to in this process that will enable us to get through and invest in what we need for health care reform, because right now, that's a real challenge for us. So the process that we're in now is going through regulatory review at the state and federal level with the attorney general and with federal regulators. We're also going through a robust process of due diligence in which the university is coming in and looking at all aspects of Allegiance to make sure that what we have represented we are is accurate and there aren't any issues. And then we're doing the same, but in a different way, making sure that what we've agreed to, the university is prepared to execute. We have also been taking a term sheet and building it into comprehensive definitive agreements that will make sure that what we've negotiated to happen actually will happen, and then communicating internally and externally, so people are really aware of what's going on. Health systems are important, critical assets to hospitals, and we know that we need to preserve this asset and make sure that we're continuing to invest in the health of the community for now and many years into the future. So that's part of what we wanted to do today, to also get any questions that you all have. And then Chad Noble and his team are, will be glad to work with you all on a letter of support after you've had a chance to talk about this. So Steve, that's the end of the formal part. Yes, David?
Thank you for the presentation. Anything noteworthy that you could mention by way of downside to this partnership, and in particular about delivery of health care, cost of health care to our residents?
Right, and tell me if I'm addressing all the points that you're raising. You know, I think we all need to understand this is a change of ownership, and this is what we've talked about for a long time at Allegiance. I think it's important that Allegiance has been locally owned and locally based. So there's always, you know, there's a risk in that. And we, I think we need to realize that health care as we know it is changing dramatically, and it's going to continue to change. Hospitals for tens of tens of years have been paid because sick people come to us, but that's not our mission. And the reimbursement that is changing now, rightfully so, is going to pay us to improve the health of the population. And what I would describe that as is destruction of the hospital model. If that works, we won't need hospitals. Now, we all know that, you know, that's not going to happen completely, but this is definitely the eBooks moment of health care. So we're making this change with now having ownership by the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor in a period of time that we can't totally envision what the future of health care in communities like ours will look like. And so I think that what we have done to create this local governance influence model is very important for the community, and what is going to really be important in the future is going to be that the community is actively involved and supportive. That's going to overcome the downsides. And then you asked about cost. I think everybody involved in this realizes that the future is going to require that the cost of health care is managed and is affordable. And most people are concerned that the university costs would in order to And most people are concerned that the university costs would in order to Allegiance Health. And we, both parties recognize that can't happen. And that's part of this due diligence process is to say, how can it actually make us more affordable for the long term, whether we share services so that we're more efficient? But I also think if we can grow, then our cost per unit, just like any of y'all's businesses, becomes lower. So growth is going to be critical. And I think every single one of you here are so heavily invested in this community. If you can imagine that Allegiance could blossom into way more than we are now, including outpatient services, which are a large part of the future of healthcare, it could have an enormous effect on this community. One of the opportunities, as an example, is that we, you know, started our medical residency program. And because of the way we're phasing it in, it hasn't, you know, quite, I think, had the dramatic effect where people would step back and take pause about what is occurring. But last July, you know, 33 of our 35 resident families moved to Jackson. Some of them bought homes, many of them are renting here in downtown, most of them have families. And we're going to add 35 to 40 a year for the next four years. That's just huge. It's people who are, you know, contributing to the economy of our community. Now, the university, because they're out of residency slots, wants to increase that number. And that's just one example of the potential. Did I answer all your questions, David? Yes, sir.
Thanks for being here. You mentioned merger, and we also heard ownership by U of M. So as this proceeds forward, if it comes to a matter of, let's say, for instance, operational direction or future business plan, and let's say U of M has a different idea, being that the word ownership has been used, would that say, would that say to us if you're sitting at the table, they would ultimately have the final say-so and direction?
That's the risk. So the things that we think are important in addressing that to the degree we can are that there will be a board for the first 10 years that will have the ultimate goal, and there'll be a phase-in process, is there'll be 13 trustees. Seven of them will be appointed by the Regents and five of them here, and then the CEO, who is appointed by the Allegiance Health Board. This is what we call a bottoms-up board in that the hospital, the health system, will propose. And then there are certain reserve powers at the university. So if they disagree and reject a proposal, then it would be up to the Allegiance Board to develop a new proposal. So there is some protection there. After the first 10 years, the commitment is that at least one-third of the board comes from this community. So there will be a voice. I think that as we, first of all, put the framework together, and as we go forward, the biggest influence that we can have is community support. If we lose that for whatever reason, I think that increases the risk significantly. This is an opportunity for us. And, you know, I've been at Allegiance for 24 years now, and I am well aware that there's been concerns and legitimate ones, some of them I think more related to other issues. But the pieces that Allegiance owns in terms of our history and our inconsistency and people choosing to get care outside of the community, we have doubled down the last 24 years to change. And I think that most everybody here can agree that we are fundamentally different organization. We are not foot hospital. It's been an interesting journey for me to say, how do you change a place and change the reputation and have people recognize that it's different? But this community, I mean, not just Allegiance, whether it's Cascades or, you know, a whole variety of other things, we need to support one another here. And those are the conversations that we have to have. Otherwise, I think the university may feel like this isn't an essential, viewed as essential to Jackson.
Why is it that if you get 30 families a year to invest in your community, you receive soccer coaches, you receive PTO board members, you receive involvement in schools and private programs that touch kids and touch the community in a much greater level? I think back to when we invited Adam Brown to join us, and now he's a soccer coach with his daughters and really involved in the community, how important that is, the ownership that goes on with the resident program that you've created for this community. And I think that we have a real opportunity to partner with one of the premier healthcare systems in the University of Michigan and to take one of the best medium healthcare systems in Allegiance and form a strong bond that can work well together. I really thank you for taking the opportunity to come here, commissioners. I know that if you have other questions, please get with Chad. He's made arrangements for other breakfasts or small get-togethers at the hospital, or if you'd like a tour of the facility. He's offered that to me also to extend to all of you commissioners if you'd like to have that tour arranged. And I really thank you for being here and sharing this presentation this morning and taking time out of your busy day.
Thank you for inviting me, Steve. We're very open to any discussions or our inputs. We recognize that this is a big decision for the community. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Thank you much. Next up, we have a local road improvement matching policy. And we have the executive director here. Jerry, welcome. Good morning. And I'm sure the board has had opportunity to look at it and have some questions. Frankly, this is our study session. It's a good opportunity to, you know, kind of air some of these things and talk it through. It'll go on to committee and then to full board ultimately. Questions, concerns? Jerry, you have any opening comments you want to make about it or the policy itself?
The one thing that I want to make sure that everybody's aware of, this policy is being anxiously awaited by a lot of townships. There's a lot of them that are already willing and able to start looking at some of these local match program, and they're just kind of sitting there going, when can you give me something? When can you tell me? And I'm like, as soon as they say it's okay, we'll start writing these. It is a little change from what you originally had, but with this particular policy, I think it's going to be a win-win, not only for the townships but for the road agency and the citizens of Jackson County as well. But I'm here to answer any questions you may have on it.
Commissioner Alexander?
Absolutely. And if you noticed, Jerry did glance my way. I appreciate the time, Jerry, that you have spent with two of my townships. And I do have a significant list. It's not real quick of areas I would like to bring up. So I'll just ask one or two or bring a couple of them up, and then I will yield to everyone else, and then I will jump back in until my list is depleted. First of all, I would request that there be additional clarification on the referencing to the road investor in this policy. Throughout this policy, there are eight different references to the, what I'm referring to as investor, for the lack of a better term. Sometimes they're referred to as property owners, townships, township boards, residents and individuals. We have not mentioned businesses and/or universities, thus our previous conversations we've had. So would it be beneficial to use a consistent phrase that encompasses all entities in making reference to the investing roads?
Yeah, or it could just be as simple as townships or property owners, because really they're the ones that have the capabilities and the needs for it. Because the property owner may be the university, it may be, you know, whoever along that road. Rather than make an extensive list, maybe we just break it down to property owners or townships, but...
Well, it also comes down to who has control of the road. And, you know, if it's a property owner has control of the road, then we're, really we're talking about a private road. And then that's another policy question the board needs to consider on a private road.
However, we have individuals and we have business owners who have invested in our public roads.
And we're thankful.
Yes, they have that capability to do that.
But they do that through the township.
Yes.
They don't do that through them by themselves. So the township has to authorize it. A business can't say, well, you know, I'll do this if you do that. Well, wait a minute, where's the township on this? Because you got to work through them.
Yeah, all these agreements would need to be signed by the township board for the roads that we take care of. So you might be a property owner on there, and all the residents along there want to repair the road. We won't sign an agreement with you. We'd ask that you go to the township and pick up the township's cost share and come back with us so we have a signed agreement with the township.
I believe it's addressed then.
I can say, to the point, though, I think we can probably modify the language here. We'll take a look at that and see if we can make it, you know, just...
More consistent.
Exactly, simpler. Thank you.
Jerry, can you explain to us? I'm not sure everybody understands how the process works right now and how this is going to change.
Well, the...
And also, where does the Department of Transportation get the money?
Yeah, what I've done is I've budgeted a portion of our general fund to township match. But a little bit further than that, what, how the money actually starts regenerating itself is when we start doing these projects with the townships. The way that match is set up, this match is set up so that we're utilizing our employees and our equipment to do the majority of our match. The actual materials present is what the townships would be contributing towards the match program. These are roads that are generally the worst roads in the townships. So instead of us spending our money on maintenance out of our general fund and out of our maintenance budget, we'll be utilizing match monies to match the townships to repair them so that we're not out there spending that money on our maintenance. So our overall maintenance costs, after we start getting into a cycle of this, will start reducing for us. And that'll be where that match money comes out of the general fund. So that's what I meant by it's kind of a win-win. We're going to be trying to take care of the majority of the real bad roads so we're not spending our maintenance money trying to repair them.
Okay. And in that light, though, where do the township come up with the money? Are you talking a special assessment tax to... Let's go to Jefferson Road, okay? It's been a topic in my district. Are you saying that to, under this scenario, to have Jefferson Road repaired, there'd be a tax assessment for the people that live along Jefferson Road so the township had the money?
Commissioner Duncan, let me jump in there on that. Frankly, that is beyond the scope of Jerry or the county to determine. Each township, those folks are elected, they need to make a decision what they will or will not do to raise the funds to repair the roads that they deem need repair. I think it would be way beyond our scope to do that. That is an option. There's lots of options. And when I was out with, I was out with Commissioner Alexander and Jerry at Palaski Township, it sounds like that township has money set aside currently, ready to go. Now, they're not looking for any special assessments. Not to say that they couldn't. Frankly, a township, some townships, well, not here, I don't know of any, but I know townships in other places where they actually have millage. The township had passed millage for road share and so forth. So there's a lot of ways that they could fund that. Yet additional questions or...
Well... I don't know what the township's obligations are right now. Do they come to you and say, we have so much money to spend, will you repair our roads? Or is this a new cost going to be incurred by all the townships?
No, currently, townships are coming to us, and quite frankly, some don't have any money, and it's real hard to get into a township match program with them. Because we are restricted by our, the way our MTF comes in, and the way the Act 51 is set up that we have to have a minimum of 50% matched on local roads to do an extensive repair. So we're kind of stuck by law as well.
Is that state law?
Yes.
Just to be clear.
Okay, what's going to happen to the townships that don't have the money for match? They don't get any road repair?
Well, we'll still do maintenance. Maintenance's not going to go away. This would be to actually do, you know, to do COCO to a local road or to pave a local road or to re-gravel it. Outside of that, normal maintenance will still get done.
Okay, what seems to me like this is kind of like the state dumps some of their operating costs to balance their budget on the counties. Now, it seems like the counties are maybe dumping some of their costs down to the townships.
Well, this is nothing new. This has been since 1931, where it's basically required that they participate in the cost of repairs.
And we have an existing policy. The policy you're looking at here is existing. You'll see when it says under A, road construction, paving gravel roads, it literally says, the change there is, says participation in this program requires that a township and/or resident share. The old policy says 100% of the project cost. We're actually reducing it to 70%. So we're bettering the township's position than what has been the policy for some time. There is a number of folks who wanted to ask questions. Carl was next, I believe, and then...
Actually, Commissioner, oh, it looks like he's going to jump out of his seat, so I'll defer to him first.
I wouldn't do that. I'd probably get hurt, an old guy like me. Well, is there a benefit or is there a distinction between what's considered a local road and a county road? Same thing or a distinction?
Oh, well, county roads are all the county roads. There's local roads and then primary roads. So primary roads are not a requirement of a 50% match minimum like the local roads are. So primary roads are the road agency's responsibility. We do at times have townships that will participate and help match when it's a road that's, you know, very hot on their topic and they want to get it taken care of. But by law, they're not required, but the local roads are.
So for instance, Jefferson Road that Commissioner Duncan was talking about, that's a primary road. That's a project that the county undertook without any match request from the township because you were taking that on, correct?
Correct.
And that would be the same case or could be the same case in other primary roads?
That's correct.
Okay. And the second thing is that this match policy is for when municipalities come to the road commission asking you to do something specifically with a local road, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Right. And the third thing is, how, I mean, do you think there's going to be enough funding, match funding in the road department budget to meet all the obligations or requests? Or how are you going to prioritize those?
Well, and this was, this is hard to comprehend real quick.
May I add?
Sure.
To that a little bit, and then you can correct me if I'm not correct. Most of the funding we're talking about from the county's perspective is already budgeted. We already pay these guys salaries and benefits, and we own the equipment and pay for the upkeep of the equipment regardless of whether we do any of these local roads or not. So our share of the money is really just money we would already spend. So it's not like we have to dig deep for a whole lot of new money is the nice thing. And as Jerry alluded to as well, and I think it's, while at first it's going to be very difficult because there's some pent-up demand, as we know, some townships are chomping at the bit, ready to go, we may very well run into a situation where there are not enough hours, construction hours in the summer to keep up with the demand. Because while we have budgeted money for these gentlemen, and, well, I guess they're all men at this point, to work all summer, they still have so many hours to be able to do the work. So some projects may actually end up pushed back if we have that kind of demand from townships. And then the important point, too, about maintenance, while the county provides all the maintenance dollars for roads, you know, potholes and all that sort of thing... the maintenance dollars for roads, you know, potholes and all that sort of thing, this program over the long run will reduce our maintenance costs and therefore free up more time and dollars to do actual construction and significant improvements of roads. I was pretty excited about the whole program that Jerry brought forward. I think it's going to be, at first, it's going to be a challenge, you know, all new things are. But truly, if the townships buy in and really take hold of this, they're going to find that significant gains will be had over the next three to five years. Okay, and just
Yeah, that was pretty good.
Yeah, and I kind of knew that, but I figured there would be a logjam of requests and how you're going to prioritize those is what I'm talking about. But I think the public perception, we need to be absolutely clear on what we're doing. It's not really something new. We're just solidifying it into better policy with the figures more concrete. But I don't want the perception from the public that we're doing what happens to us, which is getting dumped on. So we have to be clear in that, that that's not what we're doing.
That's correct. And to answer some of your prioritization of projects, what I've been asking is, and that's probably why they're chomping, they're all looking at it going, we want to be first. And I really do like when townships come early in the process, even in late fall. And once we can start bunching up projects and we start seeing common, you know, if we're going to go in and say, yeah, I've got three townships right in a row that all want to do some seal coating. The prioritization then is to get our equipment, our men down into one area and just work ourselves right across all three. So not necessarily first come, first served, but logistically wise, what makes sense to keep everybody in a certain area doing the same type of work. So that's where everybody coming in early kind of helps us so that we can plan and use our resources the most efficient way.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that go into making that decision. Clearly, cost effectiveness and efficiency, but also the condition of the road, amount of traffic on the road, the public safety issue element of that repair and of course, the timing of it, how long is the repair? Is it going to run us into, up against another project or up against winter? You know, so a lot of factors. Truly, it is, I believe, in everyone's best interest that, you know, they come early so we can get prepared and move forward.
Actually, a lot of the questions have been answered, but I will say that, and I believe Chairman Shotwell, Commissioner Alexander were there when Jerry gave the presentation at the Supervisors Association, or at least explained this concept to them briefly and what he was looking to do. And certainly, most of the supervisors did seem very receptive to the idea. And there were the concerns that have been mentioned, like, how do we do this? You know, how do you determine first come, first served? How are you going to do this? There was a question brought up to Jerry about what if the county runs out of money? So there are those concerns out there. And also, there's concerns, comments from the public, you'll hear things like, well, we already paid taxes, we already paid for this. So there is some of a misunderstanding out there, I believe, from the public because based on this proposal here, this policy here, I agree, in the long run, quite frankly, it's saving money. And, you know, from my perspective, townships that want to buy into this and get their infrastructure repaired properly, great. Townships that don't, quite frankly, they'll continue to get maintenance. And that's pretty clear cut, as far as I'm concerned.
Second round, Commissioner Alexander?
All right, thank you. Two issues have been addressed. In this policy, it states that we are re-adopting. And I struggled to find the local road improvement funding policy. I did not find it on the website, on the JDOT or the Jackson County policy. So just clarification that 8590 did exist prior to today, and so the re-adoption would be correct in that portion of the new policy then.
Mr. Brown, would you like to address that at all?
We had our intern work on these last spring and we actually have a slate of them that are ready to come to be moved over from old road commission policies to new JDOT. And so we pulled this one out. So some of the changes you're seeing in the markup are actually, were done last spring and then we've added the new program changes to it. But these were old road commission policies that we're going to move over.
Okay, just, I was writing them on the website. Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to re-address the verbiage there and re-adopt it. In regards to what we call a local road, do you believe additional clarification is needed? Because I honestly wasn't sure what a local road was. So when I pulled up the winter road maintenance policy procedure, I see that we have six priorities of roads. We have state truck lines, multi-line county primary roads, county primary roads, paved local roads, subdivision street roads and local gravel roads. I'm still not sure which one of those six priority categories are a local road. And I'm just questioning, is further clarification needed in the new policy?
We could do that. The first three that you mentioned are non-local, the last three are all local.
Okay.
And I believe it's defined by the state, isn't it?
Yeah, and actually, if you look at our map, it'll designate by color.
Well, we could do that, too. It'd add a map, you know, that would be color-coded pretty easy. Being small, but it'd be colored nonetheless.
Or supply it to each township so that they're clear. We could give each township a color-coded map of which ones are their locals and which ones are their primaries. Because as a new trustee on a township board, a lot of them don't know, you know, upfront either, so.
Before I continue, I'd be happy to yield.
Yes, a quick one. Jerry or Mike, anybody? How, because I'm sure we'll be asked, how did these percentages show up here? I mean, the cost sharing percentages, who determined whether it be 70%, 50%, what have you? Because like I said, I'm sure we may be asked, you know, how that was determined. Yeah, it's a, those percentages came from myself, that I had looked at each one of these particular fixes. And when you start looking at the labor and equipment as opposed to the materials that are required to do the particular job, the percentages are based on labor and equipment on our side of the share, materials on their side. That's where we don't run into a financial issue on the road department side. Because we are, as Mike alluded to earlier, utilizing the equipment and manpower and fringe benefits that we've already budgeted into our budget. So it doesn't cause any hardships for us, but we can still do quite a bit of work with the townships. All right, thank you.
Round three, questions? Commissioner Alexander?
Thank you. Under local road and bridge routine maintenance policy, you have the category of dust control. I don't believe that is accurate because this policy states that it's been practiced at the Jackson County, again, it made reference here to road commission, to provide the following services at no additional cost to the townships. And if it's making reference to dust control, we know that townships are, any township that chooses to use dust control service is already paying. So this is not accurate, correct?
I do believe there's a dust control in there that shows that they do participate and pay 100%. If that's in there that way, then that's something I missed on that original one that you guys had, because it should just be on the bridge side, but.
Okay, just clarification because, yeah, the figures we were given in townships, like, a township is charged $459. And again, it's just not in the policy. So I believe that needs to be amended. There's also three occasions in this document where the word effective was used, affected property owners, and I believe that should be effective with an A. So that would be one issue in there also. And then the final one, unless I need to yield again? I'd be happy to. The final piece of conversation I would like to address, under local road and bridges maintenance policy, under trees and shrub removal, this section does not address any time a tree is in a driver's view, approaching an intersection, if a tree limb is viewing or distracting a driver. Is that not, is that the responsibility of JDOT to remove trees, tree limbs that are obstructing a view of a driver or not?
As reported in, as we have our tree crews going out and about, yeah, those are things that we take care of. It would not be a match policy at that time. It would only become a match policy if it became part of a project where we're removing large number of trees as a project for township.
Sure, and I guess because it's under the category of routine maintenance, and then now we're making reference that tree and shrub removal, including limbs cutting and stump grinding trees that have fallen on road or pose an immediate threat to the road. So that's the only thing it's covering. I'm just asking, would it be beneficial or is it found somewhere else? Or do we just leave it as is? I'm just bringing up for conversation. If a tree limb is obstructing a driver's view, is it part of our maintenance policy? Okay.
Don't we have, don't we have a policy on trees, trees and street trees?
The only reason that the language is the way it is in there is, as she's seen it, where it's falling down, that's an immediate response to go and take care of it, where any other tree cutting or whatever is actually done as time and money allows from our department. So that's why, like a limb or whatever, is not addressed in that particular language, but.
We'll look at that more closely. Other questions, anybody? Who have not? Otherwise, you'll see this policy at committee and then we'll proceed from there. So hopefully, we can address these, well, actually, this afternoon. Look to do. Thank you. And I believe our last bit of business today is to look at the revenue and expenditure forecast. Adam has a presentation for us. I know he, among many in the county, have been working on revenue, revenue, no. This will be an exciting, fun-filled presentation, I'm sure. Thank you, Adam.
I sit here, a lot of you talk about having a two-coffee morning or something like that. This is a two-water morning for me. If I go for a Coke, though, then you really have to worry. Our revenue committee is made up of our office, the finance department, the treasurer's office, equalization department and register of deeds. And we meet, the primary focus of that group is to talk about the property tax forecast, which is our largest source. And then we afterwards meet with, between the finance officer and sometimes ask the clerk and the treasurer for other inputs on other fees. So you'll see a presentation of the property tax forecast and other fees and revenues. Then we'll also touch on some expenditure forecast for 2015. So this is a snapshot of this year's revenues. Just under 50% is the property tax, 21,729,000 and change. These are the same indicators we look at each year and we learn a lot by looking at them. It would be easy just to look at the appreciation of properties by class and then try to apply a percentage to a group. But we've known over the years that there's more to it than just applying percentages to classes. So we look at these indicators to, we use that information, what's the different classes of property doing in the market? But then we use these indicators to adjust that up or down based on what we're seeing. So I'll walk through those and these are always very interesting to look at for us. School enrollment is a secondary indicator. Our population really hasn't changed, as to speak of, although I was remarking to somebody just this past week that it feels like downtown, there's a much younger crowd over the last couple of years. And I think that's probably attributable to some things happening at consumers and maybe the hospital changes. But school enrollment, though, is down a percent and a half from, so if our population isn't changing, but our school enrollment is going down, that means we're having an older population or one with less kids. So business startups is going down for a third consecutive year or a second consecutive year. And we're not going to read too much into this because I don't, I think it's down significantly from the previous year. Unemployment is much the same as it was last year, still in the 8% range, much better than we were back in 2009 and 2008. New construction, this was a bright spot. If you look at that red line, that's the new homes. That's pretty constant from the last couple of years. But what was, what looks really good is that all the other permits that are coming from townships, whether it's a garage, it's a kitchen, it's a pool barn, stuff like that. Lots of other permits. You see, there was almost 2,000 other permits pulled in 2013 for work on somebody's home. So what that tells us is people are spending money, which is typically good for all of us. This is the tax base and there has been some shift in your tax base. The money hasn't changed, it hasn't gone up, but we're seeing movement. So as the, it stays relatively stagnant, between that $22 and $20 million we've been having since, back since 2009. But we've seen some shifts in, for instance, the residential tax base. As a percentage, that's growing, 68%. So it's more than a percent and a half increase from three years ago.
Adam, can you, I look at the personal property tax and it's about nine, I just moved my page accidentally, but it's about 9%. How much do we expect that to go down?
Good question. Good question. And this is intended to be open, so please just stop us along the way and Mike's going to jump in where he wants to also, so please just jump in at any time. The property tax is a great question because as we know, we're going to lose some this year. We expect to lose $175,000 in property tax because of the legislation. Now, some of that is just off the table right off the bat, which is most of that $175,000. Then there's supposed to be a millage on the ballot later, which is a replacement revenue. It won't replace all that $175. That will replace future cuts. What they decide to do is go ahead and take it the first year. The legislation says if it doesn't pass, then those cuts come off the table. Doesn't appear though that they will be giving that money back. It'll be, or will be getting that money back. It will be off the books for that year at least. So nine and a half, almost 10% of our revenue is that personal property tax. Most of that, if the legislation stays intact, will stay in place. That cover your question on that one? Can you see that that source is up almost 3% as a percentage of the whole? So that's a growing as a percentage of our total revenue. So it's an important tax to us. Now that we're saying that's fair or good or bad, because that's a cost to businesses, but what's from, what we have to be concerned about is how do we keep the services funded? And if they're going to take that tax, where do we make up the difference? Commercial has gone down. If you look, the four-year trend there as a percentage of the whole, as well as agriculture, 5% back from near almost over 7.5% in 2010. I think it's interesting and important for us to look at those tax shifts each year. This was a bright spot and actually, I have to say, most of the stuff we looked at was positive this year. For the first time in the last four years, we're looking at there, actually five, we are going all in the same direction. That is up. There's only one of those that's below the zero mark line and that's the commercial. There's a minor loss of 0.2% in commercial real estate. But last year, we lost almost 4% in commercial real estate. So all these are going in the same direction and that is either they're gaining or the percentage loss is better than the previous year. So good news, property values. More good news for the county in terms of funding services, and that is the tax expenditures or also known as giveaways. So last year, you know, while in 2012, it was almost a million dollars of giveaways. That's revenue foregone. This year, it's 8.5 million. So we're picking up, I believe it's 143,000 hours in stuff. Red zone is most of that that's expired. So that's recaptured. So that's recaptured revenue for the county and will help us out, as you can see. That's the trend we're looking at. More good news here. These are warranty deeds, that is good sales. 2000, as a percentage of all the transactions that's happening, most of them are warranty deeds. Back in 2008, 9, 10, even 11, we're looking at almost the same number of good sales as foreclosures or bank or sheriff deed sales. This is a chart we got from RE/MAX Mid-Michigan that shows average home price. And if you look at, the blue bars are the number of units sold. So the number of units really moving in the community hasn't changed a lot. You still have people moving in, you still have people moving out. But the average sale price is what's moving for these. They peaked out in 2005, went down for four, five consecutive years and, or I guess that's yeah, four to eight. And then we're going back up. So average sale price in Jackson County last year was $100,000. This is an indication of the chart two, three slides ago, the sheriff deeds and foreclosures going down. And that, I have just the first quarter of 2013, but the last three quarters also have continued to go down. So very good news. This one's a little bit different from past years. You have what we call a positive relationship, whereas the, the number of units and the value of those units is always related to each other, going in the same direction. Now we have a negative value for the first time, which is the amount delinquent has gone down, but the number of parcels has gone up. So the average value of the delinquent property is lower than before, which means higher-end properties aren't as likely to be delinquent as the lower-end properties.
What is the number of? We know the number of speculative properties that are in there. Say somebody pays the back taxes once on an empty plot of land and ties it up for the tax cycle and then it gets dumped back on the system. Do we, do we get a handle on those at all so we can really get an understanding of what truly is delinquent?
I haven't looked at that, but I'm guessing the treasurer could pull that information of how many years are expiring? Have they been paying that last year just to keep it in their hands for a number of years? We could probably look, we could probably look at that. Probably have that information available. Always an important indicator for us is the consumer price index because tied to the consumer price index is the inflation rate multiplier, which comes out each year. The key number for this year is 1.6%. That is the amount that is capped under, as a proposal A. Which means that even though the, our costs, our appreciation is in the real estate sectors, residential, commercial, agricultural, industrial, even though that's going up, it's going to be capped. You're not going to see any new revenue above 1.6%. So we did have some townships who had appreciation greater than that, particularly Sandstone Township, which I think was almost 9% increase from last year. But we'll only see 1.6% of that revenue. So it's always important indicator. They come up with the inflation rate multiplier by taking the difference in the past year's consumer price index. So just trying to sum up those indicators, most of our primary indicators are green, going in the right direction. The only cautionary ones are yellow lights or the inflation or deflation because that consumer price, that inflation rate multiplier is going to cap our growth at 1.6%. And population-wise, really haven't seen any changes. Our secondary indicators are a little less optimistic. We're all yellow on those ones. That's school enrollment, business startup, unemployment, delinquency rates. So we have good news, but underneath, we dig a little deeper, there's maybe, if it was, if it was our pocketbook, we wouldn't be going out and spending all our money, maybe. So just to summarize the market conditions, we've got good stability from 2012 to 13. The property tax projection for 2014 is on the mark. That 2014 estimated number is .95% is, is close to what we were forecasting for that year. So what we're talking about is now is 2015 and extrapolating one more year. And like I showed you, all the property values are improvements from previous year's numbers. So this is chart I show you each year about the effect of proposal A on our revenues. And we saw what happened in the 2000s about that spreading apart. And then we saw them collapse from 2008 to 2011. And now what we're going to see is them spreading apart if our resident, our real estate appreciates faster than CPI. If it appreciates slower, then we'll actually see them keep going together, but they'll both be going up. So.
Adam, if I may.
Yep.
In fact, you'll always see those in that respect in the sense that it's the aggregate, it's the total. You know, a township, you know, they have many sales. Some will be less than the CPI. Well, they don't take those and offset the other, you know? So you're always going to be something less than CPI year increase.
So the gap for this year is a 12.5%. This is what the actual numbers up to 2013. 14 was going to be our estimate, but by this time of the year, we're pretty, pretty close to that estimate. What we take, what we look at in terms of a five-year projection, we're going out to 2019 now, is the state equalized value. And that blue line is your actual data, actual assessed value within the county. And then we try to move that red line out and look at the percentage changes. And this is how we form our five-year plan, financial plan. So the gap between assessed value and taxable value right now is 12.5%. And right now, we have these forecasts that is going together. Reason why is because we forecast these very conservatively. So we've conservatively assumed that our rate of growth is going to be less than a CPI or in this case, all these out, last five years out are under 2% growth. So.
Adam.
Yep.
And it's important to note, you see how flat that line is in our income growth? Does anyone believe that that'll be our expense line? There's the rub. Our income will in no way, shape, or form keep up with what we anticipate will be our expense increase. So it, we have still, still yet some difficult years ahead. And of course, this year is a negotiating year. We have, you know, roughly, will be all of our contracts, but generally those are three-year contracts that we're looking at this year as well. Go ahead, Adam.
Good point. That yellow line is the forecasted taxable projected. And you see that's fairly flat, as Mike was saying. And if we see less growth than the, what's happening there, we're going to see those lines divide again, which means we're going to be held down to the growth. So here's a table to kind of summarize it. 13 budgeted was, actually that's a 14 budgeted, we're looking at 15. I'll correct, that's a typo. But for 14, our budget revenue is $21.7 million in tax. We're projecting, the revenue committee, one and a quarter percent appreciation. Remember the, we were capped by that 1.6 inflation rate multiplier. We're actually going to say that we're not going to see quite that much percent and a quarter. Percent and a quarter of 21.7 million is 27, $271,000 in new revenue from property tax That chart I showed you of the giveaways, we're going to gain $135,000 in revenue. But we're going to lose from the personal property tax, $175,000. So new tax 2015, you're looking at 21.9, which is a gain of $232,000 in revenue in the property tax. So let me go over some of the other revenues that we're going to look at. Clerk register of deeds, investment income, state revenue sharing, court fees. Not that there's changes among these, but these are our biggest sources of revenue. So we watch them every year. So the clerk register of deeds, 2013 was a great year. We increased the fees in 2000, for 2014 conservatively. And that was probably a wise decision because it's been a little bit of a slow start for the year. But we still believe that we'll meet the target for 14. What that means is we won't be projecting any increase for 15. Investment income, still have a bad market for municipal investments. We are anticipating $150,000 less in investment income than we have budgeted in 2014. On a bright side, just this week, Governor Schneider, in his recommended budget, said that he is asking the legislator to fund revenue sharing at 100%. So at first, when I first heard that, I didn't believe what 100% was. I was saying, is that 100% of what we got last year? Or is that 100% of what we were four years ago? Well, they actually produced a document and said, this is what it would be if it's 100%, which is, as you can see, what we were in our last year of funding from our, our own reserves.
In the past, the state has made different markers to receive funding? Are they still doing the renovation and marketing?
Yes. And they continue to change the criteria each year, sharpen it, more onerous. We, I know I attended some at our meeting last week and I'm sure if Mike saw some information about that too, but they, actually BSNA, who was here before, is producing some documents, oh, I'm sorry, it wasn't BSNA, it was MERS, actually, is producing documents to help us comply with some of the provisions of the county incentive program. So answer is yes, and it's more, more onerous each year. And it feels like a moving target because you're, you're trying to keep up with what they want to see happen. But that's what they feel is necessary. So court fees, again, in 2014, we approved some changes. That additional revenue came in even early in 2000, late 2013. It's coming in as expected in 14, but we're not going to try to anticipate any growth in 15. So flat for court fees. So if we look at all of that, balancing out the new property tax revenue, revenue sharing increases, and the loss of interest income and flat in the other two areas, we're looking at $854,000 in new revenue for 2015.
Adam, you're projecting an increase in the revenue sharing. Is that fairly certain or how much can we really expect?
Well, that's a good question because that's only in the recommended budget from the governor. It still has to make it through the legislature. I suspect we'll see some of that, but I don't know if we'll see all of it.
And the Gangru report that came out last night has former county commissioner Earl Polaski, our state rab, making reference to be cautious in that. That was information that was released last night. So he's, he's suggesting being cautious, that it has many steps to go through and they have concerns.
And he's chair of the general appropriations committee, I believe. Good question, something we need to be thinking about. So if, if I have any questions, I'll move on to the expenditure side of it and try to wrap it up. You recall after 2014, we said there's still a $2 million structural deficit in our budget. So at the end of 2014, we said there's a $2 million hole. Now in 2013, revenues over expenditures, right now we're looking at $300,000. It's still going to be hammered out. We'll have a better idea of that within the next 30 to 60 days of what the actual year end savings was. The thing, reason why that's challenging is because our revenues for 2013 do not complete coming in until March of 2014. So that's why, if you get asked, why don't we know how much we saved at the end of the year? That's the reason why is because our revenues don't come in until the next year. So roughly, you're looking at 2 million and actually I need to reverse this. We can take that 300 off the 2 million, so really it's 1.7 million and I'll fix that. But so primary expense side questions, other post-employment benefits. As of 2015, we're on pay-as-we-go. We prepaid in 2013 for some of 2014's cost, $700,000. Well, that's $700,000 we have to pick up in 2015. And that's where that $2 million hole, structural hole was. So 2015, we're on pay-as-we-go. That means what the actual cost is of pre and post-65 retirement health is what we're going to have to pay. So one of the things we need to consider, keep considering is, do we want to look at some strategy towards prepaying that? Or is pay-as-we-go then acceptable means of funding that? But we did save through changes and rebidding the plans, we saved a half a million dollars. So that's also a good move. That's going to help us out in addressing other post-employment benefits. Retirement benefits, we have what's known as the annual required contribution. What is needed to fund your, to move your plan to 100% funding? Each year, you add another year of the plan. That's called your normal cost. Good news is assets have increased. The annual required contribution for 2014 is $5.4 million. So looking at the assets in the pension fund, I, this is an exact number, 140 million. I think it's somewhat above that, but you see we've had great investment. I'm sorry?
I don't think yet for the market.
Well, what they're going to use to calculate 15, we should address it because that's probably going to be a confusion, is December of 2013 growth is what they'll use as the benchmark to do the assessment.
That's correct. And the, and also you're going to have, we use a smoothing system, which we, and we take into account the past five years, four years of our either losses or gains and divided over the time period to come up with a smoothing period. And the evil year of 2008 will be going away and we're going to have a great year of 2013 that will be being added into the formula. One and two, the pension board's also working to have the actuary come when they bring the, the program and present it to the full board of commissioners. So if you have questions on this system, we can have that for you in May, hopefully at the regular board meeting and not be a special meeting. And we're going to try to do that so there can be a clear explanation of what's going on with the general fund that's closed and the other two subordinated funds that are within the program, medical care facility and our JDOT employees.
We are going very conservative on this, even though the assets have gone up a lot in that fund. Us trying to guess this over the last three, four years has not been very successful. So even though it would indicate that maybe the ARC would be reduced, for our planning purposes, we're going to say, we're going to hold, hold the line at where we're at. We will know before the budget adoption what that number is. It usually comes in right close to that time, though. Another exposure we're at, this is near certain, is the childcare fund. We, in 2014, increased the contribution. In 13, we ended up spending 1.4 million and change on the childcare fund. And this is a hard, hard one to deal with. It's, it's taking care of kids and it's an obligation that we have and something we don't have a lot of control over. I would say, though, our judges are very responsive and very aware of the decisions they make. And they very conservatively place kids in high-cost areas at, as a last resort. Having said that, we have more kids in that last resort than, than we've had in prior years and that's why the cost is going up. Because there's not homes that are willing to take the certain kids because of their past conduct or whatnot. So we're looking at 2015 and saying, there's probably going to be an extra $250,000. The board budgeted 1.3 million in 2014. We're saying it's probably going to be another $200,000 to $300,000 above that, based on what we know from the first quarter and a half of the state's fiscal year. what we know from the first quarter and a half of the state's fiscal year. Lifeways, we don't want to go into real deep, but we anticipate additional contributions from the county. We put in a bookmark of $200,000, but the, at the end of the day, we don't know what that's going to be. It's something we still need to work out between Lifeways and Jackson County. And, something you have to address sooner rather than later is what we expect to do as far as compensation in 2015. And, because of the contracts expiring, you'll have to figure out what largely you're going to do in 2015, 16, and maybe 17, depending on how long you want the contracts to be. But, know that a percent is roughly $200,000. And, the increases we've given over the last couple of years have been barely enough to keep up with the increased health costs that we've, the state has mandated that we put upon employees. So, adding all those up together, the OPEB savings, the healthcare cost increases, childcare fund, and Lifeways, we're looking at a half million dollars in additional costs. We won't dive really too much further than that, but if you look at the revenue side, you look at the expense side, the one thing we'll have to spread is, the healthcare cost is a raw number, meaning that's not all general fund. And, over the next two weeks, before we see you on the 18th and give you a, ask you to make a target, and some priorities, we'll try to flesh that number out, so it's divided amongst the different funds, so we know the direct general fund impact of that $500,000 in healthcare cost increase, so... Next steps, well, we'll be gaining all the information we can over the next two weeks, and we'll tie those expenditures, revenues together, as well as one-time savings. We see you again on the 18th at your regular meeting, and the administrator will work through our target and priorities. We are still on target, and actually, ahead of schedule from where we've been in the last two or three years, to make a June 6th board presentation of the draft budget. That wraps up the revenue expenditure forecast.
Additional questions, concerns, otherwise? I did want to make a quick comment that occurred to me while I was listening here. Yes, we have all of our union contracts this year to negotiate. But, what, what is not included in those union contracts is union retirees. No. The unions, it needs to be clear for everyone, the unions do not represent or negotiate for retirees. You know, the retirees, the situation with the retirees, be it their, their, literally their pension, or their benefits, and, you know, or health insurance and so forth, that, that's not negotiable at this point. The unions do not represent them. Questions? I see a question over there.
Well, just kind of a point, Mike. Isn't it true, though, that many times, when it comes to healthcare, there's language in the contracts that mandates changes for current employees are what retirees get also? So, it's not technically negotiating for them, but is that accurate or not?
I believe we're going to be dealing with this quite a bit. I've already dealt with this to some extent with some retirees in our county, JDOT, et cetera. I would just, again, and this has been brought up by other commissioners as well, I'd really appreciate that our retirees are kept up on what's going on, that they understand the negotiation process when it comes to current employees, retired employees, and so on and so forth, because they get really upset, and I don't blame them. They get really upset when they get information that's incorrect, or they contact somebody who's currently working, and they tell them wrong information. So, I would really like it for any of the people that we bargain with, that the bargaining people, the retirees specifically, again, are at least kept up on and notified what the process is like, so that they know this is how it works, and it can't work this way, and so on and so forth. Again, information for them is very valuable. So, from my perspective, I'd really like to see that, that information get out there, either through the administrator's office, HR, or something.
I know recently, there was some questions from some retirees about a letter they received. Just to be clear, that had nothing to do with the county. That letter was from Blue Cross Blue Shield, not from the county. We didn't initiate it. We had no even knowledge that it was going out. So, you know, to be, to be clear about that, there's, there's a fine line there. When we're in contract negotiations with an ASME unit, do we contact, contact all of the retirees from that unit from years gone by? No, we do not. You know, they don't, they're not represented, and I think that's beyond the scope of the county. If we are doing something that affects the retiree, clearly, I think it's incumbent on us to, to do everything we can to communicate with them and notify them in advance of doing it. No problem there. But, every time we enter into contract negotiations, are we going to contact all the former employees? No. This board would have to frankly direct us to do that. There is, it sends the wrong message. They're not being represented anymore.
That, that part is true, but I think you've hit the nail on the head with when we're contemplating changes for them. Certainly find some method to notify them, so they can get educated on it. But, on the flip side of the coin, I think a lot of the misinformation comes from, for instance, retirees talking to other people, and people getting their wires crossed, and that's where we should be, I think, directing those people to the HR department.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree. I would agree. I think we can, we need to do a better job with the unions and their, their representatives, their leadership, that so they understand what their role is and, and so forth. I think that's where a lot of confusion starts, if you will. Thank you. Other questions or concerns in regard to, I didn't want to get too far afield, but, Adam, do you have additional?
Yep.
Well, thank you very much. This was a very good presentation. I would, I would say that while it is, is more positive than we've had in the past, we're not out of the woods yet. We have some significant costs, as Adam alluded to, Lifeways, childcare, both significant dollars. And of course, you know, we do have union negotiations this year. And, as of right now, I believe we're still looking for roughly a million dollars in reductions in expenses to balance our revenue with our expenses. So, just so everyone's clear, there's, you know, the number's not totally finalized, but it was 2 million last year. Well, we've received a little more revenue, but we're still about a million dollars short. Structural shortfall. Yeah, yes, sir.
I just wanted to comment that I'm thankful that we've been so frugal in the administration here. Department has elected officials in the staff, and that we've had that fund balance to rely on, which is dwindling down. But, that has been our long-term goal. With that, it's served us well, and we're, looks like we're starting to come out of the woods, so I'm appreciative of that.
Yeah, I, I would concur. Any other questions? If not?
Any public comment? Commissioner comments? I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Road Commission for their yeoman's job in taking care of our roads. I think they've made us all look very good, and have answered questions in a timely manner, and worked hard to, to deal with the many issues we've had this winter with all the snow. One and two, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners also for their indulgence of myself in letting allegiance come and explain what's going on. I think it's important that we, as leaders of this community, hear what they have to say. And, if we so deem additional questions need to be answered, please either direct them through the administrator's office, or contact Chad on your own, or if you're invited to any of their coffee breakfasts or anything, please don't hesitate to attend. They can be more thorough with individual questions, if you'd like them to be. Thank you. Oh, one last thing. If you could, before we get to Personnel and Finance on Monday, have your peach-colored expense sheets turned into sandy. That would be most appreciative, so we can move through this process without Delane being here. Just keep that in mind, and think about turning it in after the first couple of meetings, if you could, please. Thank you.